Everybody ready? Welcome to the September 3, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers on the bookcases. And if you, the commission is now utilizing speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on the item, please complete a speaker request form located on the bookshelves in the back of the chamber and return it to Commissioner Officer, Office Manager Holly Hennies, located at the lower right of the dais over here. Actually, it's to the left, but they're right. Okay, so we'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge allegiance leg by Ms. Carroll today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda. Please, a motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is consent agenda by Ms. Holly Hennies.
Good morning, commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 20, 2019. Number six is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on September 20, 2019 for budget supplement SP 19-017 for the MacArthur Fund State's Attorney's Budget. Number seven is authorization to cancel the list of outstanding checks over one year old and remit funds totaling $4,018.67 to the Office of the State Treasurer. Number eight is to approve the South Dakota Game Fish and Park Services contract for snow removal at the Hilltop parking lot. And finally, number nine is to approve the purchase of road salt on the state contract number 17323.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda five through nine? If not, at this time, is there any commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for further discussion, five through nine? If not, a motion?
Sheriff, I'd move the consent calendar.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. To approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is item number 10 from the regular agenda. 2018 Financial and Compliance Audit Exit Report. Sir? Your name, sir?
Morning, Bruce Hens, I'm with the Department of Legislative Audit. Just finishing up the 2018 fiscal compliance audit for Pennington County. I think that's on the Auditor General's desk for review and signature and hopefully it'll be out, I'm thinking, this week. I guess I haven't heard anything, but that was last I heard on Friday. First thing I've got, everybody should have a copy of a letter that's got your letterhead on your letterhead. I need the chair's signature on that, please. It's our representation letter. Just kind of get some things in writing that we've discussed over the course of the audit. And Cindy signed it already.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Hens from the board? Or a motion?
I'd make the motion to move authorize chair's signature on the audit letter for the Department of Legislative Audit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. Questions? Or a motion? Or any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number 10, or number 11 is Title III Public Input on Proposed-
I'm not done yet.
You're not done?
I got a few things to go through first.
Sorry, sir.
As far as the audit goes, the audit report, it's a clean, clean opinion letters. It means there's no findings, no qualifications to the-
Sorry, Mr. Hens.
Anyway, there's no findings in the audit report itself, no written comments. The opinion letters are all clean. That means the financial statements were fairly presented. So those are all good things. The things I got to discuss with you today are just some oral findings. They're in the other letter that's on our letterhead. If you go to the second page, the first page kind of talks about the areas that we look at for deficiencies in internal controls and violations of laws and regulations and grants. That's at the bottom of the first page. At the top of the second page, it talks about the audit adjustments that were made. We had one audit adjustment to make. Wasn't Cindy's doings of any kind. We were a little slow, our office was a little slow getting out guidance. There was a change. GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, come up with a new standard for reporting on other post-employment benefits, OPEB we call it. And that's your health care plan and how that gets reported on financial statements. They changed that and she had put the numbers on based on the old guidance, previous GASB. They issued a new one and we were just getting to it at the beginning of the year. And so we made one adjustment to the financial statements to get that properly reported on the financial statements. Otherwise, I just found a couple of other small reporting errors that didn't warrant any adjustment or anything like that. We based everything on materiality and they were slow enough and they were more like just classification type adjustments that we had to make. A couple of other items that are in that letter that I want to talk about, one I think you guys have already kind of discussed, was out-of-class pay, a couple of things that turned up in our payroll testing. It's something I think that's been addressed over the years by the various boards. It was, I went to ask about it. We couldn't, I don't know if it was in the policy manual or not. We did find some resolutions, I think, that previous boards had passed from years gone by. And I guess I thought it would be a good idea that if something was part of the annual salary list that's included is just a narrative that out-of-class pay is being approved. And so every board is aware of it as the boards change over and everything. And it's kind of funny because after I did this audit, I did Lawrence County, I did the city of Deadwood, and I had similar situations of three counties or three entities in a row. But anyway, like I said, it was something that's been addressed in prior years. Cindy did some research and found there were resolutions where it had been approved and stuff, but I just thought it'd be a good idea to include it as part of the annual salary list and then every board is aware of it. The other item I ran across was related to the sheriff's office. He has some employees there, correctional officers, that are doing security work also during the fair and during the rally. And happened to have been, I think it's been going on for a number of years, the way it talked or sounded from talking to some of the various people. And evidently, we haven't had it fall out in our samples. We take random samples and I've never had somebody, I've had law enforcement people fall out, but never from this time period around the rally. Anyway, when I looked at the timesheet, they'd worked their regular 40 hours as a correctional officer, and then there was another 30 some hours working as security for either the fair or the rally. And it's like, we're, I guess, I never did the research, but we're wondering if that needs to be paid as overtime. So that's what we are kind of suggesting, I think, and that's what's in our letter to see if that's, if that's, if that needs, because they were paid at straight time. And I know we did some research years ago, because I know Mead County was doing something similar. They had employees that were working in various departments and they'd go to work part-time during the rally over in the jails, jails. And for some reason, somebody had did some research and found that that wasn't applicable because there were different departments, completely different jobs, and so the overtime rules weren't applicable. But that's been 20, 25 years ago. So I don't know what Fair Labor Standards says today. We're just suggesting, I guess, to do some research and find out if that's, whether these are related type of jobs from the same department base, one overtime should be paid.
Did you talk to the sheriff?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and he's aware of that?
Yes.
Looking into it and?
Yep, yep. So, other than that, that's the only things we've gotten in the report. I mean, this is just in this management letter, these couple of things I've discussed with you here, there's just oral findings, isn't written in the audit report itself. It was a good report. If you guys don't have any questions, I'd like to thank Cindy and Janet and all their staff for all their help. And also, after a couple of people left the auditor's office here last year and a few years locked out the door, I just wanted to say that the transition was pretty smooth with Cindy and her staff this year. Made our job a little easier. Whereas, whereas one day, anytime there's turnover and stuff, and I didn't, I didn't have too much doubt, I guess, coming in that everything was going to go smooth, and it did. It went real smooth, so that was good for us.
We appreciate it, and that's-
Yep.
Madam Chair.
We have some good people, and I think people have questions now. Commissioner LaCroy.
I just want to thank, thank you for the report. And these were items that were presented to us, and I'm glad you were able to address them and explain them. And I know, and the commission knows, you know, like, the reporting on the county. Trying to read it without my glasses.
Out-of-class pay?
Out-of-class pay. We've been discussing that for, for quite a few, quite a while now. So I appreciate you bringing those forward, and I'm sure they're going to work with those and get them taken care of. But I think it's always good to have some other eyes on things that come in and take a look at things and bring them to our attention. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Lloyd. Commissioner DeSanto, please.
So Bruce, you're just simply, because we have been discussing out-of-class pay and voted on it a couple of weeks ago, you're just recommending that each year-
Just include it, yeah, in January, when you guys do that annual salary list.
Okay.
You know, just include it as a narrative in there. And I don't know how much detail. Cindy's been calling me a few times, trying to figure out what kind of language to put in it. I'm not real sure, I guess, just something, I don't want a big, long story or anything like that, just something that would kind of address what's going on and that it exists. So every board is aware of it, I guess.
Right.
And you guys are aware. Like I say, the board's turnover and, and just with the resolutions, the way it had happened, I mean, they were so long ago, some people don't even, didn't even know that they existed, but they're there, they've been approved by the board. I just thought it'd be a good idea to put it up front at the beginning of every year and-
Okay. Then the second question I had is, as far as the overtime hours by the correctional officers, is what we're, are they working their normal shift and then working?
Yes. Yeah, it's all within, you know, within a one-week period, within a 40-hour week period. That's why I say they were working their 40 hours of their normal job, and then they were doing 30 some hours of security work at the fair or the rally. And so that other 30 some hours probably should have been overtime. I don't know for sure, though. I guess I didn't do the research. I mean, when it comes to Fair Labor Standards, there's so much stuff out there, and I kind of leave it up to your HR people and let them do the research and find out for sure. I mean, like I said, we did some research 20, 25 years ago, Mead County, and we found that that was okay because they were completely different departments, and it was an isolated case type thing, something similar to this, because it was just during the rally where that was going on too. But they were completely different departments. Well, I remember it was somebody out of the equalization office that was going over and working in the sheriff's office for that one week and putting in, and then they take annual leave, they didn't work. And I don't know, maybe if, maybe the annual leave played into it too, that that didn't count as hours worked, so they didn't pay the overtime, because that's what they were doing. That might have been the hour there.
Sheriff Tom.
Name, sir?
Morning, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff.
So it's an assumption, but I'm assuming that these hours that are worked are probably volunteer, I mean, they volunteer to come in and do that extra work.
Yeah.
For pay, obviously, but-
Uses the term correctional officer, but it's people that are reserved, correctional officer, but they have reserve status with us, so it's a very small number. And so they work in their reserve capacity. And under the reserve rules under the state that administers the reserve units, we can pay them for certain events with prior approval from the Standards and Training Commission. So we pay our reserves for working the rally and the fair, the two events that we typically pay our reserves, the rest of the time it's volunteer status.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I assumed.
And I did, I did discuss this with Bruce, and we've made the corrections that we need to make, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or follow-up? Commissioner DeSanto?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Bruce, I see three recommendations in your report. Do you follow up on those in the following year? See if those recommendations-
Yeah, we'll take a look. I mean, like the out-of-class pay, I mean, I'll see that, before it sounds like, I'll see that when I look at the annual salary list, you know? And I'll know from discussions I've had too, you know, that there's been corrections made. So, yeah, we usually do.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Not, we do have a motion by Drews and second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I did sign it. Thank you, Bruce, for everything you do for us. I was making it easy on you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number 11 is the public hearing for Title III input, public input on proposed projects for Natural Resources Director Scott Guffey. If you'd like to come up and tell us what this is about.
Morning, Scott Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Director. This is kind of our annual Title III public input period. This is a requirement to enable us to expend those funds as we got to take public input in from the public. So this has been advertised for 45 days in the, in the legal newspapers, so you're recognized by the county. And then just ask that you guys open it up for any public comments from the floor here and then get recorded in the minutes, and we'll have that taken care of.
So Mr. Guffey, why the wildland firefighter equipment and stuff this year they came to or?
No, this is, we leave it, when we, in the past, when we advertise it, we leave it pretty broad, so it gives us flexibility on what to use those funds for. So they did expand those allowable uses here in the previous year, and they did open it up and it kind of highlighted in that, in one of those. Oh, where was it? I didn't bring my copy, but they made a couple of key additions on the wildland fire and then also on the community wildfire protection plans that the counties have to have in place. Used to be able to just, you used to be able just to write the plan, but now it says implement it too, so that's key. So now we can use it on our shaded fuel break work too. All these funds have to be expended on national forest property. Like when there's a search and rescue event by the sheriff's office or search and rescue, they can use those funds as long as it's, the search has been done on the Forest Service. So.
Yeah.
But they really, it used to be really broad spectrum, and then they kind of restricted what we could use them on, and now they've expanded a little bit more, and there's talks that they might expand it even more on our allowable uses, so. That was good.
Any questions? Commissioner DeSanto?
So Scott, if I understand you correctly, the shaded fuel break that we can use the, some of these funds for shaded fuel break, would that include like skid steer or something like that?
It's more for on-the-ground. You can purchase equipment on it, but it's, you got to be pretty careful on what equipment and what it's used for, but it's, I'd have to dig deeper if we could-
Give me, give me an idea what hourly salaries?
Yeah, so we could use, we could pay, you know, our hourly funds to our, to our crew that's out there, and then we can recoup that money.
Okay.
The main thing is that you try to recoup it within two years. Otherwise, if you don't, those funds revert back to the feds. So it's kind of use it or lose it type deal. I think in 2019, we've got it allocated out, or the ask has been on the budget for $20,000 to search and rescue. I think $5,000 is going to a wildland fire, and then $7,500 is going to fuel breaks. So.
Very good.
And if we get down and we need to move those funds, we can do that, just make sure that we capture those funds. They don't want those funds being built up again like we have in the past.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
First, I'd like to thank you, Scott, for all the hard work that you do on this. I mean, you don't have all your paperwork, but all the information that you're giving us is, should be online and available to everybody. And just wanted to express how important it is that, that grant is always in risk of going away every year. And if it wasn't for determination for people from the National Forest Board and people like yourselves advocating for it and being able to find the uses to, to help our Forest Service and our community, it probably would go away.
Yeah, you know, that's just the Title III. There's Title I and Title II dollars. Title I go to schools and the highway department. So, yeah, if those funds go away, the schools would be really affected, and so would the highway department. And then the Title II funds will be coming up soon. That's the RAC, the Resource Advisory Committee that District Ranger from Hellcane and Tracy Anderson came in and talked about a little while ago, they're starting to reform that RAC. And I believe Ron Ross Connect, you put your name in the hat to serve on that RAC board, so. That'll be good. Hopefully this fall, they'll get that organized so we can put in for those funds as well.
Appreciate it. The only thing is, I'll give my report later on, but I did a tour of the national forests and the services in the area a week and a half ago and got to see some of the areas that have the weed problems that you're working on and so forth. So I may not have been able to go with you guys, but I did one previous. And it really brings out the awareness of the work that you do when you get out there and see it, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lloyd. Commissioner DeSanto?
I'd just also like to thank Scott, sitting on the Weed and Pest Board now. I recognize how much work he does to find grants, and you dig pretty deep. And I like that, that's awesome, that you are out there looking constantly and looking for new grants and that kind of stuff. So I just appreciate the hard work that you put in, Scott.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner DeSanto? Any other discussion? Public, do we have anybody who'd like to speak on this from the public? If not, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item auditor. Public hearing, general fund law enforcement budget supplement.
Morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. Before you, we have the supplement 19-16 for a general fund law enforcement budget supplement in the amount of $10,615 from current year revenue from the sale of firearms is the revenue source.
Do we have a motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy, second by DeSanto.
Just some clarification.
Commissioner LaCroy?
This is from the gun sales. Correct. So I just wanted to clarify that this is from the gun sales that they had from, what was it, a month ago? Okay. They're transferring back over to purchase new. That's, that's all they had.
Thank you. They're going to purchase, upgrade the special response team rifles with the fund. Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next item that we have is the 2019 Series A bond escrow deposit. So I'm asking for a motion to authorize payment of $258,053.59 to the escrow account for the closing on those bonds. We were able to get a better interest rate than what was first anticipated, and so we were able to have a net savings of $1.5 million for the county by refinancing these bonds.
How much, Cindy?
1.5.
Way to go. And that was over and above the $258,053 for closing costs?
The $258 is, is in that net savings of the 1.5.
I'd make the motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion to approve by LaCroy, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 13 is laundry service equipment contract award.
Good morning again, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. Submitted a memo for the laundry and kitchen upgrade we've been working on. This is the equipment for the laundry part of that project. And we had two bidders, and one we rejected the bigs, they didn't meet the bid specifications. So you have a memo with a motion before you'd authorize the purchase of the equipment for $267,775.93.
Thank you. Sheriff, do we have any discussion or motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Drews. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
Evidently, one of these companies didn't follow the bid process. What was their, I was just curious of what their bid came in at? I only see the one.
The, was confusing. They provided four individual quotes in one bid ranging, one of them ranging from $118,000 to $136,000 as part of the equipment. But here's kind of a laundry list of what they didn't do. They didn't use required proposal forms, did not provide the company history or plan for the project, no project manager identified, did not provide duplicate copy of the bid, did not properly label their sealed bid. All four quotes were substitute washer and dryers, no substitution authorized or correspondence, and there's more, I can go on, but I don't remember the final dollar amount. Do you remember their dollar? What is that range?
It didn't include several requirements.
Yeah, so it wasn't a complete bid.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
So Sheriff, the, the funds, can you give us a breakdown of where those funds actually come from, how they're divided out?
Yeah, these all come out of our budget, and we've, we'll budget it going forward. We'll usually, if we have some leftover, at the end of the year, of course, we'd work with the commission to try and lump some, some of it. But otherwise, we build it in our budget and pay it over a several-year period.
So you budgeted some of it for jail, for juvenile services and for care campus?
Correct. We can take it out of, because the laundry and food service is centralized, and so we serve all of our satellite facilities, we can budget it from each of the satellite facilities, JSC, care campus.
Okay.
Do you have a breakout of which each one, where, what money came out of each one, like the jail, JSC, and the care campus, like separated out of how much you're taking from each?
I don't have it with me, but I can do a follow-up email to you with it if you'd like.
And then a question I have is, what was the original bid? Because we don't have, like, how much did you budget for, for this expansion? Bottom line, you have, the bids came in at $2,677,5.93, but did you budget $300,000? Did you budget $250,000? What was the budgeted amount for this?
We'd estimated between laundry and kitchen combined, we'd be somewhere between $900,000 and a million, and I don't remember what the kitchen was. So we're setting at $952.
So this came in, so this came into budget?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner? Anybody else?
Got a motion?
Okay. Motion by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
May I ask for one more privilege? I don't think we gave enough recognition to Cindy for the amount saved on that bond. I'd come up with $800,000 if it's okay.
Go ahead, sir.
If anybody has any other discussions. I mean, that was $800,000 that I come up with that we saved. It's over a million, isn't it? Over $1 million that we saved by refinancing, and we kind of went through it kind of fast, and I, but I just wanted to really give Cindy the recognition to be able to research that and bring that back. It's greatly appreciated for the taxpayers and for this county.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
So in other words, Lloyd, what you're saying is that this isn't just a drop in the bucket?
No, it's not. It's huge. Especially when we have the budget coming up on here, so.
Thank you for that. Commissioner LaCroy, and anytime you want to give people extra recognition, we have time. So, thank you, sir. Next, we're on item 14, items from emergency management.
Morning, Commissioner Dustin Willett, Rapid City Pennington County Emergency Manager. Before you, I have a request for the chair's signature on the adoption resolution for the 2018 pre-disaster mitigation plan. I've spoken before you, uh, at least once, if not twice, on, uh, on this plan as it's moved forward. Very happy to say that, that through several back and forths, both with the state and with FEMA, the plan is now conditionally approved pending adoption. So, FEMA came back and said, yep, you meet all the, the right requirements. The plan is approved by FEMA pending adoption of the jurisdictions. The City of Box Elder has already adopted it and then we have several more meetings lined up. I'll be meeting with, with Keystone later this week, Wall later this week. So, I've already met with, with several of those elected bodies outside of their regular meeting schedule to discuss, uh, the, the plan and the pending approval. So, happy to bring this before you and certainly happy to stand for any questions you might have.
So, Dustin, is it supposed to say twenty nineteen, not twenty eighteen? Why is it twenty eighteen?
Uh, because the plan's been out of compliance for a year. It should have been approved in twenty eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, basically, the, the plan title says twenty eighteen, that's when we've been working on it. That's when we started the whole process, that's what all the documents say. When we get our actual letter from FEMA, uh, the plan is valid five years from the date that they signed that letter. So, the letter that gets put on the very front of this plan will be a five-year letter from the time they approve it. So, uh, the plan will last longer than five years from twenty eighteen.
Thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you. Deb, thanks for that question, cause I had the same question, you answered it. So, if it, if this is good for five years, you have to revisit it in five years?
Uh, so, it, it needs to be revised within five years. And, uh, the lessons learned out of this revision will certainly be incorporated in the next revision process. So, we'll be talking about, uh, this plan and then a, a, uh, complimentary plan, the THIRA, Threat Hazard Identification Risk Assessment, that looks at technological and man-made hazards. This plan specifically looks at natural hazard. There are other categories of hazard that affect our jurisdictions in Pennington County. So, those two plans together, we will be looking at, um, rather than waiting until an, an end of a, a life cycle to, to begin the, the revision process, this will be a continuing process. Again, learned a ton of lessons that we'll incorporate over the life cycle planning of these plans.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
So, Dustin, is this the one that previous to this time has been contracted out?
Yes.
But you've taken it now in-house?
Correct, the last time we had, uh, the, the twenty thirteen plan, I believe that contract was about forty, forty-five thousand dollars to have that done.
Very good.
Thank you, just, just to note, um, in our NACO news, there's a article on natural disasters, not a sprint, it's a marathon. And I think it kind of has a lot to do with what we're talking about today and that natural disaster is not a sprint, it's a marathon. In the case of flooding following fire, the threat of rain and flooding with lust for quite some time, here are several hu- human resource items to consider when working with your emergency management department preparing for natural disaster. So, they have a number of things that, uh, go on in natural disasters and why it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. It's a very interesting article on NACO, um, that kind of puts together what you're talking about and what this whole plan is about. So, I thought that was pretty interesting that that came out, uh, the same time that your twenty eighteen, um, resolution came out, pre-disaster.
One of the, uh, if I could pick one piece out of this plan that, that, that is, um, an incredible statistic, and there's lots of statistics in this plan, but the one, uh, statistic that's incredible is, it, it's tough in budgeting. There's, there's bills that need to be paid to, to keep operations going. But there is a, a, a pretty comprehensive report that basically says for every one dollar in mitigation, so for every one dollar you spend hardening a community, uh, preparing the community to, to be resilient in the face of disaster, for every one dollar invested by that community before the disaster strikes, you actually save six dollars in response. And you wouldn't have to look hard for any financial analyst to say a, a six to one return on your investment is, is a, a pretty significant return. Finding that one dollar upfront can be challenging. And again, that's why it's, it's important that this document be adopted and approved so that we can have access to, to potentially some grant funds to help that mitigation process. But, but mitigation in a community and building resilience in a community is a smart, uh, not only financial decision, but obviously the, the life safety and the property conservation for that community.
And that's what they point out of the first on policies and training and, um, variety of, uh, expertise needed with different departments and the granting and the money. And it's actually everything, like I said, that you talked about in your pre-mitigation. So, I thought it was pretty interesting that, again, that it had the same things and that, that cash flow when that disaster happens is pretty huge. We knew that from Atlas, so you are right Dustin.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
Uh, Dustin, uh, I just appreciate the effort and the work that you went through to put this together. Cause it not only applies to the county as a whole, but it applies to every one of those communities located within Pennington County too. So, um, thank you for your diligence on it.
I'd move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto for the provision of the resolution.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you again Dustin. Item number fifteen is items from human resources. First is the proposed employee handbook revisions on bi-weekly pay.
Good morning Commissioners, John Morrow.
Good morning John.
Pennington County Human Resources. So, we have a few different topics here today. So, fifteen A, uh, are proposed employee handbook revisions that are related to the pay period, uh, changes. So, uh, beginning with the pay period in October, that starts on October twentieth, that's actually the initial pay period with our transition that will move us from a current monthly process to the bi-weekly process. In order to actually implement that, there's some, uh, several updates that are required within the handbook, um, due to that transition. And you should see attached with that memo, there's a, two pages with a number of areas that are highlighted in yellow. The wording that's struck through is the current wording. The yellow is the additional and/or the updated wording to actually make this so that our handbook reflects what our, our process will be with the beginning of that October twentieth pay period. So, if you will, I could stand for any questions that you may have about the updates that are listed there or I'd be seeking approval for those changes in the handbook.
Commissioners, any discussion? Or a motion? Commissioner Drews? Drews? Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect, any other questions? From the audience, no other questions? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you Commissioners. Item fifteen B is some additional proposed handbook changes. This has to do with the safe harbor policy of our handbook, which speaks to the different deductions, if you will, that can be made from, um, salaried or exempt employees accrued time and/or pay. So, we've been reviewing this over a number of, of meetings with, uh, the department head meeting as well as the compensation committee. What this does is actually reflect the changes that were approved, um, at the August eighth comp committee meeting. I wasn't present for that, so I got the, the minutes in the discussion afterwards. What this does then is allow us to actually make deductions from accrued benefit time for exempt employees, where in the past, we've not done that. So, this will bring us into more of a standardized process, if you will, for benefit time. Only for time that actually exceeds four hours or more, we will actually deduct it in increments of four hours for those employees.
Thank you.
And again, I'll stand for questions on this as well.
I have one question on overtime. If like a department is having a lot of overtime, does somebody, like, you don't have that much budgeted in your budget to keep doing that overtime? Who's, who's in charge of like saying, okay, Julie or whoever, you can't keep doing this, you need to find a solution. This isn't gonna work, cause your budget is not gonna support it, our budget's not gonna support it.
Sure.
Who kind of regulates that?
That's actually handled within the departments as they schedule people for those overtime hours. That's not related to this, this piece. So, it's a completely separate thing from a budget perspective. As they work through their proposed budgets for each annual year, each department actually puts in what they believe they'll have for overtime hours and that may vary, you know, plus or minus from what they're estimating for the future years. But I, I do wholeheartedly believe that they're very aware of what those overtime hours are and they're working to address that with each pay period internally.
And we haven't had any, that you know of any issues or you, I would have to ask Cindy with?
Yeah, I wouldn't have any of the information, Commissioner Haddock. Cindy would have that in the auditor's office.
I can.
I, I know I work pretty closely with some of the departments that do have structured scheduled overtime in their schedules. And they do have it built into their budgets for that.
I just didn't know if being HR and with the employees, that you work with them to say, okay, um, you need to hire those three people, you said, instead of overburdening your employees because it's coming through you with overtime saying, okay, these, they're, your departments, your people aren't happy with how you're doing your overtime.
Yes ma'am, I, I do receive feedback from employees and work very closely with the departments where that overtime is actually to the point where they feel tired and, and want a, a bit of a break. In some cases, especially around the holidays, uh, as you might imagine, it ends up being almost a Christmas fund for some folks. They'll volunteer for a lot of hours because they like the extra pay then during the course of the summer. Sometimes it's not as welcome, uh, but we do work to have the departments all fully staffed as often as possible, so we don't have that.
Well, bottom line is if we're paying on budget, where we should be having full-time employees and not have so much overtime, how that's running into?
This is gonna sound a little silly, that actually, so, uh, before I became an HR person, uh, I had been going to school for accounting. There are actually times where it's less costly to have some overtime than it is to actually hire another person because of the benefit cost and additional employment costs. So, it's a fine line, finding that balance as well as for the engagement of the employees to make sure they're not having too many hours of overtime. The goal is to try to find that balance where it's financially and fiscally responsible for the, the employer as well as beneficial for the employees and I think we do a pretty good job.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I kind of got off a little bit on overtime, but I just didn't know those answers. I guess I could have asked each department, but
Sure.
I appreciate, uh, you answering that.
You bet.
Commissioner? Sorry? Just, that question. Do you have a motion? Or?
Approval of the revisions.
Moved by Drews. Second by Haddock, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. You guys are quiet today. Compensation study?
Fifteen C is the compensation study. So, basically, just wanted to bring you up to speed on the communication process, the meetings that we have scheduled and would invite you to attend any or all of these as you're interested. What we'll be doing beginning next week, Monday, uh, and the first meeting will actually be at the Highway Department. We'll be doing the Weed and Pest and the Highway Group, uh, at that meeting. But six thirty Monday morning is the kickoff for the actual information going to the employees about the process. This will be a presentation conducted by the Gallagher representative, so Mark Goldberg will be here on site. He's, he's coming in Sunday evening, the eighth. We'll begin the presentations through, um, Tuesday early afternoon. About an hour long in length, that includes the question and answer period, but basically outlining every detail about the process, the timeline, the methodology used, so that employees have a better understanding of what's being done and then the benefit to them long-term as well. Now, there are two separate meetings, one at eight o'clock on Monday, the ninth, and one at eight o'clock on Tuesday, the tenth, them specifically for the department heads and/or elected officials to attend. On Monday, again, it'll be about the process, the different milestones that we're gonna be measuring progress, those types of things. On Tuesday at that meeting, we're actually gonna be going through, uh, a, a few of our current positions and using the methodology of applying, excuse me, applying the different ratings to come out with evaluation for those jobs. So, it'll be the, the nuts and bolts about the actual process so that our departments understand that as well. And then we'll be, begin the process actually later that week.
Any questions?
Uh, John, question, six thirty meeting on Monday, where is that?
It's the Highway Department on Monday.
That's the Highway and the eight o'clock meeting?
Eight o'clock meeting will be in the emergency office, or excuse me, the Emergency Operations Center on Monday. On Tuesday, those meetings will be here. The six thirty meeting will be at Health and Human Services on Tuesday morning and then the eight o'clock meeting will be in this chamber on Tuesday. And we will be recording at least one of the sessions on Tuesday. So, for employees that were unable to attend one of these scheduled, uh, info sessions on Monday or Tuesday, they'll have access to that later and/or anybody else that's interested will be able to go back and review those meetings as well.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
John, you talked about these meetings, where are they gonna discuss?
So, the, the process actually, on Monday, the meetings will actually be from start to finish. It'll lay out the timeline, it's a five-month project. It'll lay out the timeline, the process, the interviews, what kind of data they look at, what they're using for comparable entities and then how they actually do the process of moving from, okay, here's where we are today to delivering the final product at the end of that five-month window, where they present options as far as what we should or could do with regard to our pay structures. So, that's Monday. On Tuesday, we'll actually be taking several jobs, probably three or four different positions and actually dissecting them to apply values to the different components of those positions. So, we can actually get a, um, eye on, if you will, example of how those will be done for every position we have in the county.
Okay, so the employees build and give their input and act to see how it's done and so forth and so, okay.
Yeah, most definitely. So, again, all the meetings on Monday and Tuesday will be that except for the eight o'clock meeting on Tuesday for the, the department heads or elected officials. That's where they'll actually be dissecting, uh, again, three or four exact positions to say, okay, here's what we get using our process. They have a process that they use internally to actually place values on the different components of the job. You know, uh, knowledge, skills, br- uh, how broad the control is, the work environment, those types of things are some of the components that they measure. And then they'll actually be applying point values to those.
Okay, thanks John.
You have great questions, thank you.
Any other questions? Appreciate it John.
Yep, no action needed on that, just information for you. Thank you.
Have a good day, sir. Next is number sixteen, request for approval of second approach, Mr. David Grover? Your name, sir?
I am David Grover.
Um, just an explanation, sir, of basically, you'd like a variance to the ordinance fourteen standards to approve a second approach on east side of Old City, Old Hill City Road to property located approximately one and a half miles southeast of Hill City.
Yes. Yes, that's my request.
Could you tell us, um, why you need the second approach if the second approach is already there? If you want to stay up here Joe, that'd probably be nice to help him out a little bit. Thank you. And your name, sir?
Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent.
Okay. We need a little bit of help with Mr. Grover here?
I'll actually let Mark step up here, he worked with Mr. Grover on this extensively, so.
Thank you, sir.
And the reason why is the, the approaches there right now is down on the, the east south, uh, end of the property and it goes to where the wellhouse is there, it's hard to see, but there's a little building there down towards the bottom of that. And where I would like another approach is more towards the, the northwest coming off Old Hill City Keystone Road. You'll see that, uh, kind of in the center of the property there, you see some, uh, trees that are growing. That's pretty, that is kind of a, a hill from that lower part and then you have this steep hill to get up to the other part of the property up above. And up in the north part is where I would like to build a house. So, I just wanted to have a, a decent approach to that piece of, that portion of the property.
Mr. Grover, you have an approach, where's your other approach at on that property, sir?
It is right there.
And you'd like it, now where would you like that second approach at? Further? Can you show us where he wants the other one, Mark?
Yeah, that's west and north, where did this go to?
Might have to help him a little bit, Mark.
Hey, good morning, Mark Shaw, Pennington County Highway.
Right there is about where I want the, in the second approach.
Okay, sorry, Mark?
Um, I did go out onto the property there and, and looked and as, um, Mr. Grover said, they, they would like to build a house in this portion of the, of this lot. And, uh, there is adequate site distance there, um, it's wide open. And the reason that they're asking for the second approach, like Mr. Grover said, they, the, there is an approach down here on the bottom where there is, there was an old existing home site years ago. But they need to continue, uh, the operation of that approach because their wellhouse is, is located right there and they're gonna need access to that. This ridge is very steep, so for them to get up, up through there, it'd be quite a hardship to, uh, travel, especially in the winter.
So, is Highway Department okay with the second approach?
The Highway Department is okay with the second approach, but, uh, I just noticed may need to, uh, keep in mind, Mr. Grover's, uh, on the agenda for planning and zoning, uh, item number D for official subdivision of this lot from, uh, a, a much larger lot there.
Okay.
But, uh, Highway is, does, has no opposition to a second approach in this location.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner? Ross Connect?
I've appraised this property in the past and I totally agree that, uh, that second approach would be necessary to do any, uh, decent development. Because, uh, as Mark said, that second approach, the first approach down to the south, just due to the topography and, uh, soggy conditions on that particularly, particular piece of property, that second approach to the north would be, uh, best way to go for any future development.
Thank you, more discussion or motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grover and, uh, Mr. Shaw. Next is the public hearing for the consideration, consideration of the FY twenty twenty provisional budget as annual budget appropriations expenditures and revenues for Pennington County, South Dakota.
Madam Chair. You, the public hearing can't start for another ten minutes. You do have an executive session if you'd like to go in for a few minutes and get that portion done quickly.
Let's do that, move to, um, go into executive session.
Moved by DeSanto to go into executive session, second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do you have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
All moved.
Moved by Drews, second by DeSanto, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. First, the motion.
Good morning Commissioners, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. I have a motion I'd like you to entertain. The motion would be this, to approve the resolution regarding the opioid crisis and to authorize the board and to authorize the board chair to sign any documents related to taking legal action on behalf of the county.
That'd be a motion by?
I would make that motion.
Drews, second by?
Second.
LaCroy? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
So that's eighteen and nineteen, we're back to item seventeen, public hearing on the budget 2020. Ms. Cindy, your name, please?
Morning again, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. Now is the time for the scheduled hearing for the 2020 budget for Pennington County. I don't know if you want to take comments before we go into finishing up the motions.
Any comments by the public?
Yeah.
Okay, um, do we have any public comment today on the budget, the 2020 budget, before Ms. Cindy starts and the board starts the discussion today on it? If not, Ms. Cindy?
I did have a couple of items in your memo that we do need to address before you could actually finalize the budget. The first one being the accumulated building bond budget. Due to the refinancing, we are, we will be able to reduce that budget by seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. And that would require a motion by the board in order to reduce that budget.
Okay, let's do that first. So you need a motion to reduce the 2020 accumulated building fund bond budget by seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven?
So move.
Moved by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
The next item that I need to address is the county fire budget. While I was going over the, the numbers to prepare the final budget, Holly noticed that I missed putting in the transfer from general fund to county fire of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. So that was not in your approved provisional budget. So if the board wishes to do that, we would need to make a motion. I know that there are, have been other discussions on how to continue to fund the, the fire budget.
I think there's some questions, Ms. Cindy, on the workman's comp for the firemen, and if that should go out of general fund, and then the reserve of the thirty-two thousand, three hundred and nine. So, Mr. Drew, if you want to start with workman's comp discussion, and kind of tell us your view and what you had Cindy look up and why. And then that might have something to do with how we're working those reserves of the thirty-two thousand, three oh nine.
I would, thank you. First of all, we've not been, we've not been paying for the workers' comp for the, under the Fire Administration office out of the general fund previously. I truly believe that's where it should be coming from, because as volunteer firefighters, and we have about four hundred and fifty of them in the county, the, they actually, you know, qualify, we've given the approval to pay the work comp coverage for each of these, and consequently, that should be coming out of the general fund. So the cost for this coming year for work comp would be, based on forty-seven dollars per person, per year. Jerome tells me the number is about four hundred and fifty, so that amount would be twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to pay for the volunteer firefighter work comp insurance.
So Gary, can, does that usually come out of the fire service, Fire Administration budget? Or does it come, it, where does the twenty-one or twenty-one, one-five-zero usually come out of?
You need to answer that.
Ms. Cindy?
That is normally paid out of the fire budget, out of the fire fund. And what Gary is referring to is paying that out of the general fund.
Okay. So Gary, can I ask, Gary, on the workman's comp is twenty-one, one, one fifty. Are you saying take the twenty-one, one fifty plus, give them the thirty-two, um, three hundred and nine, or?
I haven't said that, but.
Sorry, Gary.
Quite frankly, I wouldn't have objection to doing that, doing the thirty-two thousand.
So thirty-two plus the twenty-one, one fifty, Ms. Cindy?
That's what you are considering doing?
Right.
Of course, I didn't put that in the formula when I started hearing.
So it's fifty-three, four, five, nine, is what it would be, if I'm correct, board?
Right.
Okay, discussion on this, uh, the fire service budget.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
From what I'm reading, and I thought this when we were doing the budget, so for 2020, the operating transfer with a projected ending balance of one hundred and two, which equates to a thirty-six percent reserve, is that including that? If we, if we did not give them originally the thirty-two oh not, three oh nine, they'd still be able to make their budget and still have a thirty-six percent reserve?
That is correct.
So really, that's higher than what we're looking for. My thoughts when I was reading through this, and I have no problems with the workman's comp thing, being able to fund that, but I think that should have been brought forward before budget time, when we were, during the discussions and so forth. Personally, I think that's part of the solution to what needs to be done in this. But I would be in support of not having the thirty-two, three oh nine, since they have that big of a reserve. I understand that's kind of got us in this problem, they had too big of a reserve way back when, and then, then the levy went down, was reduced, and so that's what kind of brought us into that problem. But to get through this year, I think they do the reserves, and then I think we look good and hard at that funding the, the workman's comp. I mean, I, I could, I could support that, but I think it's kind of the last minute thing at this point in time, because I'd like to see more than the one solution come forward. I'd actually like to have the fire board have it on their agenda every month to discuss how we're going to be operational in the future. Is what I'd like. I think this is part of the solution, but I would look for it for more of next year than this year. That's just my thoughts.
My thought is, how much does the twenty-one, one-five-zero affect our budget for reserves or basically increase on the levy? And I'm sorry, Cindy, the fifty-three, four, five, nine, how much does that make a difference? I mean, if it's not hitting that, that budget line, where it's actually affecting a whole lot. I'm with Gary, I'm, I'm not opposed to the fifty-three, four, five, nine. We're trying to make sure, and, and this came about also because we started looking at the Fire Administration and that area, and just different ways of how we did our budget. That's why, for some reason, we thought we knew, and we found out from Jerome and Cindy that we didn't know exactly on the numbers and, and how the budget was being done. So that's how this came about, and how we found that maybe we should do this a little bit differently. A hundred and five in reserves might be thirty-six percent, but you think about how far that goes with four hundred and fifty firefighters, that thirty-six percent, as you say, on the budget's higher than ours, but a hundred and five dollars, a hundred and five thousand, sorry, doesn't go very far with that many people in, in a volunteer fire department. That's why I said we needed to build the reserves up, because that doesn't go very far. It looks pretty big compared to that budget, but it also is funding mostly a fire administrator. It's not funding the whole board. And start thinking what they, I've been on that board for a couple of years, what they spend the money on. That's to take care of their men and women in that service, a hundred and five thousand dollars isn't going to go very far. And the other thing is, is we said to go get grants, and we said to go get things with this fire service board, and they did. They just got a million dollar grant for some of their stuff, so they are listening. My point is fifty-three, four, five, nine, for what we're doing for that volunteer fire department is going to be huge, or we have funded many other departments, a lot more than that. And these people, again, that's only fifty-three thousand dollars. And I believe it's well worth it, so. The other thing, Cindy, is we'd have to know how much that affected our budget at basically fifty-three, five for levy and reserves. And I apologize, because I didn't say anything when you and Gary were talking about the twenty-one, one-five-zero.
Yeah, that was the, the last worksheet that I just handed you was adding twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty to the general fund insurance budget, which decreased the reserves to fourteen point eight, three percent in the general fund. It does not affect the reserves at all for Jerome's budget. It just basically frees up twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars that he could use elsewhere next year in his budget, other than paying the insurance. If you'd like, I can definitely run that, that number for you.
Commissioner, Drews?
I think, I think the number that Cindy just gave us, that's like four tenths of one percent that it dropped it from, you know, that twenty-one. So if you took the, the fifty-three, five essentially, you're probably talking about somewhere between twelve and fifteen tenths of one percent. I'd take it down to about fourteen point seven oh, I'm guessing.
It wouldn't make that much difference, you're correct.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
By, you know, by all means, I'm not. I think everybody up here supports our volunteer fire departments and what they do and so forth. I guess where I'm coming from is when, you know, when I first got on the commission, I met with the board. We were having short calls at the budget time at that point in time. And I remember Danny and Jerome and the whole group was in the room, and Deb was there. We had specs for inventory on the fire foam and reduced that down, we got into budget. We were having discussions on what needed to be done. That's, and I understand, you know, twenty-one thousand dollars isn't that much. But if anything that comes out of this, I would, I would support the twenty-one thousand. But I'd like to see on their agenda, in every board meeting, about their budget and discussions and how to reduce it. So it brings it to attention, so it doesn't get bypassed over and over every year. Discussion on their budget or how to, to work on it, to whether they have to try and do an opt-out or something along those lines, but I think it needs to be talked about, because it just seems like we come back every year, it's, something's changed, and, and I'd like to be able to find a way to make it sustainable, so we don't have to take from the general fund or look, be creative, or just, that's what I think where, where I'm going at with this is, we need to find a sustainable solution. I think the workman's comp is part of it. I think that is a part of it, but I think we need to get some other possible solutions going forward. And that's, that's the only reason why I'd like to see it on their agenda every, at every meeting, so that way they all keep it in mind. I understand they're volunteers, and not everybody has the time to put into that. But I think if it's on their agenda, keeps it fresh in their mind, they work on it, and, and maybe they can find some solutions, or give some options.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. I believe through grants that they're looking at, and they did follow through with that, I think through their fire districts, where other cities and counties have decided to go into fire districts to add more protection from the fire service, the volunteer fire service departments, not cities, I'm sorry, counties. They have done their due diligence to try to get more money and take and not use so much of the fire fund, except for their administrator and some of their equipment. So I think they have done a lot of that due diligence through that, and making sure their areas, their districts are taken care of. So again, that, that reserve is built up before, and they had no issues, and they didn't have to opt-out. So anything we can put towards reserves, so they don't have to go through an opt-out and, and do a bunch of other things besides grants and the things that they do best, I think is insurance for our counties for fire, so that's just my opinion. But, sir, Commissioner LaCroy, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I've been in there a couple of years, and, and we have tried many different things, and that's why we're still here. We have had many discussions, and again, we've got a lot of different areas that we cover. That's many, many fire districts in that area, so I believe it's money well-used, and I am listing on your twenty-one, one-five, sir. Discussion, board? Or a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I would make a motion that we utilize the twenty-one thousand, one-fifty for the work comp out of general fund for the Fire Administration Office.
Second that.
It's been a motion on to move the twenty-one, five-zero, one-five-zero to pay the volunteer work comp insurance. And a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So at this point, um, I believe that we should make up the difference, or at least give them the eleven, one-five-nine difference of the thirty-two that we had promised them, and it wouldn't affect our budget. That's what we're going to give them in the first place. I think that's more than fair, saying that we're going to give them thirty-two, three oh nine from the beginning. That would bring it down on, to eleven thousand, one fifty-nine to put in their reserves. And we do have that budget in. Any discussion on that?
We already voted?
No, we voted on the twenty-one.
We, we voted on the twenty-one, five, one-five-zero, not the reserves.
Oh.
So.
Oh.
We can either give them the thirty-two, three zero nine, or in my discussion, at least, we gave them the twenty-one, the twenty-one, one-five-zero would come out of Jerome's budget, and now come out of general fund, if I'm correct. And the difference is the eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So then that would reflect what we're going to give them in the first place, was the thirty-two, three zero nine.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I would at least make the motion to move the thirty-two, three oh nine out of the general fund to the county fire reserve fund.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I agree with the twenty-one, one-fifty, and I, and from what I'm reading, the thirty-two, three oh nine wasn't added to the general fund budget. But I understand what you're saying, the fire budget had planned for it. But I think the twenty-one, one-fifty to cover the workman's comp is adequate. And at this time, I, I won't support the motion on the floor.
So Commissioner, I, I agree with the three, thirty-two, three oh nine from the beginning, but Cindy, if I'm correct, the twenty-one, one-fifty won't be taken out of budget, so they will get twenty-one, fifty, plus the thirty-two if we do it this way?
If you do the twenty-one, which you have done, the twenty-one, one-fifty out of general fund, he will not have to pay that out of his budget that he has now, so that frees up twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for his use.
So you see where I'm going, so he will get basically the thirty-two, three oh nine if we give him the eleven thousand, one-five-nine, and then put the other twenty-one from general fund. Makes sense? Because he'll get that twenty-one, one, one hundred and fifty back into his fund. So we will be still funding them, thirty-two, three oh nine.
I, I understand that, but I think he needs a goal of eleven thousand dollars to save, or work on it. I, I think the twenty, for me personally, I think that makes sense, the, the twenty-one fifty, we're going to do the workman's comp. I think Gary did an adequate job of explaining that. But I think to, to add on top of that, I think, as I said before, I think, you know, we need to put it on top priority to the budget at their meetings every month, and, and go that route, and find some, how to get sustainable. But at this point, I'm, I've supported the twenty-one. But at this point, I've supported the twenty-one one-fifty for the workman's comp.
So I'll make a substitute to fund not the thirty-two three-oh-nine, but the eleven thousand one fifty-nine. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second for discussion. Any other discussion on the substitute? Okay, let's vote on the substitute first to fund the eleven thousand one fifty-nine difference from the thirty-two three-oh-nine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's do roll call, so I can hear you. Sorry. Roll call, Ms. Kara.
DeSanto.
Nay.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
No.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haggard. Aye. Motion carries with three ayes. So we're taking, we're putting in, our general fund is twenty-one one-fifty to pay volunteers' workman's comp, the difference out of the thirty-two three-oh-nine that we're giving them. They will still get thirty-two three-oh-nine because the twenty-one one-five-zero won't come out of or out of fire fund. We will put back in the eleven thousand one-five-nine for a total of thirty-two oh-nine still, or thirty-two three-oh-nine coming into the fire fund. All right. Thank you, Board, for the good discussion. Ms. Cindy, tell me what's next.
The next, I guess that's totally up to the Board. You could approve the budget with those changes at this point. None of what you have done will change the levy that I had described in the memo. So the levy won't change at all with those. The only thing that you're basically changing is the cash applied, which just will reduce the reserve estimation slightly for next year.
I'm going to do a point of privilege, which I forgot. I should have let Jerome speak or any of the firemen that wanted to speak on this issue that we just talked about. I apologize, you all came here to support your fire service board, Jerome, if you'd like to come up. I know you wanted to say a few things to the Board.
Jerome Harvey, Pennington County Fire Administrator. The budget item is discussed at every county fire service board meeting. It's on all of our agendas and it's been on everybody's mind. And there is no easy solutions to this, but there is a general trend as far as, the budget does go down, the budget has gone down, but the calls for service continue to go up. The issue, the heart of this issue that we present to you is the fact that the county taxpayers themselves are carrying the sole burden for services that are provided countywide, regardless, whether it's communications network or paging network and so on and so forth. So by moving that money out of general fund into the fire service board, that helps stabilize that and everybody in the county from taxpayer side of viewpoint has a say in what's going on with that. It's not just a burden on to the county taxpayers themselves, everybody's paying for that. And we have some large projects that are coming up. We do have the grant that came through that will help us with some of that, but we're looking five to six years out on projects, on our communications projects, we're loaning excess of two-hundred-and-fifty-some thousand dollars. So the costs aren't going down. The Board continues to work on bringing those costs down, it has done so. We've gone from the original budget I worked on here was three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, we're down to two-hundred-and-seventy, two-hundred-and-eighty-some-thousand dollars. So our budget continues to go down, but the services and requests continue to go up. So by general fund money, everybody in the county is helping out with what's going on. It would be disastrous, it'd be a complete disaster, and some people here can talk to you about that, if we were to force to split our communications network. All the paging, all the radio stuff, all comes, rides in the backbone of the county fire network. And this way, everybody in the county, the cities, everybody has a say and is in the pot on supporting that.
So Jerome, can you tell us about your grant that you guys just got awarded?
Yeah, well, the Chief Smith is not here today, but Chief Smith from Rockerville did a yeoman's job. Everybody in the room here in the entire county, every county fire service supported her on that. The grant is an assistance to firefighter grant through Federal Emergency Management Agency, and it shows unification really of the fire service here as far as working together because it's a regional grant. And that is the second regional grant in a two or three-year cycle, Tim? In a three-year cycle, which is unheard of. So we're bringing in nine-hundred-and-eight, just short of a million dollars. The total is about a million, one-point-one million to fund the radio replacement. That's an unfunded mandate by the state. We work on grants all the time, whether it's grants for grain bin rescue equipment, whether it's grants for firefighting equipment or radios, we work on it all the time.
Question? Commissioner LaCroy, please.
My only comment is, as I said before, I'm not, I think you guys do outstanding job looking for grants. I think you all do that. It's volunteer, I think. I guess, I just know that since I've been on this commission, we've had, this has been a concern through all three years. And I remember hearing solutions of opt-out and there's other things we're working on. And at the beginning of the budget cycle, it seemed like, the way I took it, is we were going to end up with a shortfall in the budget. And that's why I supported the thirty-two. I really did. And then I seen the reserves and so forth, that's why I support the workman's comp. But that's where I'm at, Jerome. I'm not, I'm not, nobody's saying that the services are wrong or it's just that the way it was presented at the beginning is that, that we were going to be short. That's, and that's why.
Pardon me. That comes down to the way that the budget was explained to me, and Cindy and I have met several times on this. Originally, it was looked at as a reserve and then the taxable portion of the budget. And the reserve was for this and the taxable portion was for that. You, as a commission, looked at that budget as one. And that's where the disconnect was, is I was looking at the budget as two separate items and you're looking at it as one. And that's where the breakdown is.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto. So we don't have that miscommunication, let's clarify on, now, one of the things that you talked about quite a bit was radios, pagers and communications. You've just received nine-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. Is that, I thought that that was specific for radios, pagers and communications.
Correct. It's for the hardware piece of that. That's the physical radios out in the field. What the county takes care of is the paging towers, the repeater backup, the stuff up in the courthouse. Allows a dispatch to talk out in the field. The rebroadcasting stations are throughout the county for the paging. And the thing about that, Commissioners, we're not, the county fire service is not the only ones that are on that backbone. All the ambulance services are on that backbone, search and rescue is on the backbone, law enforcement is on the backbone. So it isn't just us. What the grant is covering is physical hardware in the firefighter's hands. It doesn't cover any of that backbone piece. And the nine-one-one funds that we all pay for our cell phones and everything else, my understanding from that, talking, looking at the state statutes and talking with the dispatch center over here, that money cannot be used for the repeater that's sitting atop of Scranton Mountain, the South Bullock site, for example. We can't use that money for that. That comes from this fire service board through you guys.
And what is the expense of that each year to maintain?
Well, like, we just took a hit of almost ten thousand dollars on bill on repairs because of a lightning strike that we weren't, you know, we had some funding for it, we've had to move stuff around to take care of it. But as far as what the radio shop just gave me, a cost estimate to upgrades in five to six years is two-hundred-and-fifty-some thousand dollars for total first replacement, just on the paging side of it. So there's real costs there that don't go away.
Okay, thank you, Jerome.
Any other discussion? Any questions for Jerome?
The only comment that I have is, I think you guys know where I'm standing, is just the way the stuff was presented to me. I just, and the reason why I say at every board meeting, I want a workable solution to where, you know, the year before, we took the CPI out of the fire fund, we made some reductions, and then this year, we're getting more money. I don't think we need to, we need to find a workable solution so we don't have to be doing this every year, whether it's an opt-out, the commission does something. I think we need to have those discussions at those board meetings, so we're not doing this. Because there's not one person up here who does not support what you guys are doing and what's going on. We just want to find a workable solution to where it doesn't become an issue. And I think, you know, I can go aye, aye, aye to all this stuff and then nobody thinks about it later on, they put it on the back burner until next year. That's why, that's the reason why I'm saying.
Hold on, Jerome. Listen to what he's saying.
You know, that's my only comment, is I want to find some workable solutions, one way or the other, so we don't have to do this.
Well, one thing we did do was, me and Gary met with Jerome, and what we found out with meeting with Jerome is the way the budget's done and how it can be different, and came up with that with Cindy as well when Jerome met. So we were thinking that Jerome was needing a lot of help on his budget and was, couldn't really get his budget down. Hopefully, I'm not making him sad about that. Long story short, he was right on his budget and how he was presented and how he was doing his budgets, if I'm correct to say that. Gary, when you did your, looked at how we were doing things and listened to Jerome on his budgets. So some of it was how we could work with Jerome in the future, not just on his budget, but centralize how we do our budget and make it a lot easier on many people. Because you should have seen some of the paperwork that he has changed since he's been in there, because it was so, some of the stuff didn't need to be detailed, some of this stuff didn't need to be detailed. So by the time he was done with a lot of his information, we found out some of the stuff maybe he shouldn't be doing and other things he's had help on, but even the other people said, the way the budget was being done on his fire service board, it wasn't his fault. He was trying to figure these things out. So we were blaming that he couldn't do a budget or whatever, and it wasn't anything to do with him personally. So if you can't figure out the system and how you're doing a budget and it's changing or the reserves or anything, how is he supposed to nail down with his board how much he needs or what's happening and figure out that budget at the end of the year? I can't explain exactly, maybe Jerome can on how you talked about the centralization of how we do budgets. It's not only his department having this issue. So I understood what was happening in the past, but now that it's not rumor anymore and it's actually fact about what was happening, there's a lot different story about some of what Commissioner LaCroy is talking about, not on his own fault, because I was listening to it as well, but some of it of how the fire service board is doing their budget and what they were told by one auditor compared to another auditor. So Cindy has helped Jerome and this fire service board a whole lot about how he does his budget and in the future, I think it's going to be a lot easier for him to figure out and come up to this board with a lot better budget. And if that doesn't happen this year, I'll be surprised next year coming up for his budget about how things are done through the fire service board. So we are going to visit a little bit of that in executive session on some of this stuff, but just to be clear.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Living in a rural area of Pennington County, I think citizens of Pennington County should be very, they're very lucky to have these volunteer firefighters because that's a lot of time, taking the courses and learning, being able to sit there and be a certified firefighter and hopefully anybody that does live in the county, they'll never need to dial one-one-one, but when they do, at least they know that they've got some good qualified firefighters out there that come to their rescue. And thank you for your service.
Mr., nope. Lloyd, did you have any more questions? All righty, Cindy. Board, do we have discussion or motions that we need to make on this budget to move forward? Anybody needs to look at any other changes for Cindy? Ms. Muller, sorry. So Commissioner Drews.
Are there other numbers that we need to be plugging into this resolution?
No, because the actual tax levies will not change at all. That's part of this.
So Cindy, if we were going to make a motion today on this budget, tell us what that motion would be.
To approve the 2020 budget with the motions that were made prior, to change provisional to annual.
Motion is today, that remain.
So you do, do you have solid numbers that we can plug into the amount of uncollectible taxes, miscellaneous revenues, cash applied, all that stuff? Or I guess we need some numbers, Ms. Cindy?
Looking at the worksheet that Holly had, and I was trying to get there, but I'm sorry to say that one of the numbers that's on there is not jiving with the numbers that I gave you. By a couple thousand dollars, it's not going to make a difference, but I can't give you an actual final total budget to plug into that. I mean, I can give those to Kara for the minutes. If you approve the budget with those motions, we will plug those numbers into the motion if you would like, or I can take a few minutes and make sure I've got the exact numbers for you.
We can table this if you'd like and then before executive session, get those numbers. Are we okay with that, Board?
Yeah, I'd like to have the actual number, because one number up here says, weren't we projecting at one time at four-eighty per hundred thousand estimate? Then it says two-forty is really where it's at now? So that's quite, that's like half of what we were projecting.
Yes, Commissioner. What happened is between the time that I pull provisional or pull the numbers for the provisional budget, I don't have final numbers from the Department of Revenue for the actual assessments, nor do I have the utilities. And I don't have final numbers for the tax increment district values. And the biggest change to the numbers that I pulled originally to now is that one of the tax increments dissolved and it gave us another, I can't remember, it was forty-two million or forty-five million dollars worth of taxable value. That's why the levy decreased.
Okay, so I just want to point that I think we, I'm agreeing with Ms. Haggard, the chair, if she wants to table it, then we have the actual numbers so the public knows.
Okay, do we have a motion for the tabling, please?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto to table, item number seventeen A.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll do it before we go into executive session, if that's okay with the Board. Next would be items from planning and zoning. PJ Conover, five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five-minute break, did you say, PJ?
Hi, PJ Conover, Director of Plan Department. Usually you do a five-minute break for anybody who needs to do a request for.
Motion for a five-minute break, please.
So moved. Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's go into planning and zoning, PJ. I don't think we have to make a motion, come off break.
No.
Okay, consent calendar, Mr. PJ, please.
PJ Conover, Director of Plan Department. Good morning, Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion voted the Board, and items that were removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda to request of a Board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for the planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A, second reading of rezon nineteen-eleven and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen-eleven for Olson Rental Properties LLC, fifth land surveying as the agent, and approval's been recommended. Item B, planned unit development review, oh-one-oh-five for William Anderson, Cliff and Billy Janis and SL Holdings LLC, has been recommended be continued to no later than a November fifth, two thousand nineteen Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, PJ.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody from the public who wish to remove any items on the consent agenda A and B? Commissioners, is there anyone who wished to remove any items A and B from the consent agenda? If not, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to a private consent agenda.
Motion by Ron Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, regular agenda items C, D and E.
Right, thank you.
Please.
Good morning, Cassie Bullstead. Item C on the agenda is the first reading and public hearing of rezon nineteen-twelve and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen-twelve. This is a request to rezon four-point-six-zero-six acres from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to Low Density Residential District. The applicant is Julie Benson Wilbur. They are in the process of plating this property into two lots. The part that you see highlighted in yellow up there is proposed Lot One. The remaining portion of that property. The remaining portion of that property, um, will be the other lot. They are only requesting to rezone proposed lot one at this time. Currently, it is going to be four point six acres. It's undeveloped and access will be taken from Nemo Road. In the surrounding area, the zoning districts are General Agriculture District, Limited Agriculture District, and Suburban Residential District. Also, um, Low Density Residential District in there as well. The surrounding future land use zoning is Low Density Residential Planned Unit Development Sensitive and Suburban Residential District. So they are requesting this rezone just to comply with lot size requirements for this proposed lot. I do want to point out that currently the applicant's minor requests, or minor plat request, excuse me, uh, was continued until they provide percolation test and soil profile hole information, or submit a subdivision regulations variance waiving that requirement. So you guys have not approved their minor plat yet, um, but the layout plat has been approved. Um, this was routed through the interdepartmental review process, nothing of concern came back. And it does appear that their request to rezone is in harmony with the current and proposed future land use in the area. So staff recommends approval of rezone nineteen nineteen and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen nineteen, and the plan commission concord.
Thank you. Do we have discussion or a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
When I was going through this, I just wanted to highlight if people want to go back to the page four, their five for requests for comments. Um, and highlight, I highlighted county, uh, fire administrator. And he put in his notes about how fire medica- litigation, uh, he, his recommendations and, and gave websites and so forth of how the, a person can get fifty percent off if, if they want to do fire litigation. I think that's very informative of knowing the fire administrator, but also the staff to have that in their reports, cause it gives the applicant actually contact information to, if they wish to go that route to help out with their property. I just wanted to highlight that, so, you know, it's not very often that we, uh, we get a lot of questions about how things could happen. He's actually got it all written in there and, and it's very informative for the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Any other questions? I have one, um, on the special flood hazard, it has not been studied on the subject property. They still have to get a FEMA. Do you have to get a flood hazard?
No, basically what not studied means is that FEMA, we don't have FEMA flood maps for that. Um, so it's basically an unregulated area, cause it's an unstudied area. They don't have to do a study on it, um, cause FEMA hasn't studied it.
So tell me on flood hazard, what's the issue with the flood hazard on there? Is there a creek or is it a dry area? I mean, like, what area is the flood hazard in, and why are they calling it flood hazard if it's not?
We don't have it defined as flood hazard.
The special flood hazard area has not been studied on the subject property.
Right, yep, so it's not defined as a flood hazard area. We don't know whether it is or not. FEMA hasn't studied it.
Okay, thank you. Guess I'm not getting that, but, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto.
Ms. Lloyd. Or did you move?
Either one, I don't.
Both did at the same time. Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thanks guys. Item D?
Um, item D, um, is something a little bit interesting. And actually, right before, um, you guys came out of break, I was actually notified by the State's Attorney's Office that this is not actually a true reconsideration of the minor plat. This is just an amendment to the minor plat. Um, what happened here is this minor plat was approved by this body in July of this year. What they are doing is they're just subdividing off this section up here. Um, the way that it was approved with the minor plat was it was going to be called lot one of Grover subdivision. So they got approval of a layout plat, approval of a minor plat, and then on August second, the applicant went to file the plat with the Register of Deeds, and at that time they were told that Grover subdivision already exists. So they weren't able to file the plat. So basically, um, what needs to happen is this has to come back before you to simply amend the subdivision name so that they can file this plat. There's nothing else changing about this. It is just an amendment solely to change the name from Grover subdivision to Busmar subdivision.
So it'd be a continuance for what date?
Not a continuance. Basically you guys can still act on it today. The motion just needs to be a little bit different than what is listed in your guys' report. Um, it needs to be a motion to amend minor plat, MPL nineteen nineteen, to reflect the change in the subdivision name from Grover subdivision to Busmar subdivision, still with the nine conditions listed.
That would be my motion.
Drews, and then DeSanto as a second. And then it doesn't have to be, um, in the newspaper, any different for this to move forward. We can change what, what we said.
Yes, that's my understanding, since it's just solely to amend the subdivision name.
Just so we're doing it right and we're not coming back, cause we couldn't make that motion. Thank you, honey.
Madam Chair.
Mister Drews, please.
So, it was this the Grover subdivision then that was already on file?
The Grover subdivision that's already on file is actually off of Highway sixteen up by.
Different property.
Yes, totally different property, totally different area.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Cassie, just for clarification purposes, that exhibit, the subject property is actually the smaller piece to the northeast?
Yes, yep.
And not that larger parcel, because once that is planted, each one of those will have a separate ID number.
Yes, that's correct. This right, right up here is going to be lot one. The rest of this over on the, of the south side of Old Hill City Road is staying unplanted.
And then will that make a difference, cause earlier, uh, today we approved that second approach?
Mm-hmm.
So that will, will that make a difference in the, uh, any further development of the property then?
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion by Drews, second by DeSanto? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item E, please.
Thank you.
So again Commissioners, um, item E is about the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan. Matrix Design Group has made all the necessary updates, uh, to the comprehensive plan per the Planning Commission's recommendation to the Board. So we have an updated comment matrix. We also have an updated comp plan that is, that shows all the corrections and is a pure document. And then we also have another document that shows what the Planning Commission and the public changed through the course of the last six months. What we're looking for, what I'm looking for from the Commission today is a motion on, uh, the first hearing of the Pennington County com- draft, Pennington County Comprehensive Plan before the Board of Commissioners. This first meeting, uh, would be similar to, if anybody attended the fir-, I forget who attended the first one, the Planning Commission, where, uh, Rick Russ from Matrix Design Group comes out, talks about sort of the history of, uh, the comprehensive plan, some of the changes that were occurred, and gives a little bit of direction on, uh, the Commission's considerations going forward. In your packet is a memo, um, showing some available dates, um, that Mister Rust has that coordinate with existing Board dates. In October, uh, Mister Rust is available on October fifteenth. Um, he's also available on October twenty-ninth. It's not a Commission day, but, uh, due to the five week, uh, month, he is, he can come out on that Tuesday. In November, um, is also available on November fifth and November nineteenth, and he only anticipates, um, a presentation of just over an hour. But again, depending on Q and A.
November fifth and what was the other one?
Nineteenth, ma'am.
Okay, so are those all Tuesdays?
They are Tuesdays.
Okay, Commission, do we have a preference, October fifteenth, October twenty-ninth, November fifth, or November nineteenth? Everybody checking their schedules? Basically hour of your time?
November fifth.
November fifth? Does that work for everybody? Commissioner LaCroy, are you looking at yours now?
We have a meeting that day?
These would, these would be during regular meetings.
What'd you say?
We would add an hour to your regular Commission meeting, unless you wanted to schedule a special meeting.
It's gonna be after, I can make them all work, I don't care.
Yeah, okay. Any suggestions? Do you want to do it an hour before the meeting? Start at eight?
Sure, yeah.
Start the meeting at eight and have him do that for an hour and then go to the regular meeting, Holly, on.
Yep, absolutely.
Do we say November fifth? Everybody okay with that? Start a regular meeting at eight o'clock, do an hour of presentation from con- uh, Pennington County Comprehensive Plan, and then go to, um, consent and, okay.
That'd be my motion, November fifth, eight o'clock.
November fifth, eight o'clock, to nine o'clock. Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
PJ?
Nothing further.
Um, first of all, um, Holly wanted to remind us that we have a September twentieth, twenty nineteen meeting. Don't forget it's September twentieth and not, um, the seventeenth, Holly. Okay, so don't forget, uh, September twentieth. And then Mister DeSanto, I think will just, what'd you want to do with that?
I'll be in attendance.
What?
For the September twentieth. I will not be able to make that. That's why I'm asking for a special budget.
Oh, you're not gonna make the September twentieth? If we approve it today, um, with what we have, then that would go away, wouldn't it, Commissioner DeSanto?
If what?
If we approve the budget today. We wouldn't need to, um, do the special meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, so should we, you wanna table this or, let's table your item as well?
Table it till Cindy comes back.
Or after the, um, twenty twenty FYI budget discussion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto to table after the twenty twenty FYI budget. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Item C, did you want a continuance, Mister Roskinett, till September twentieth on that?
I would ask for a continuance until we get more information to put in the resolution.
Okay, continuance to September twentieth by Commissioner Roskinett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Committee reports. Commissioner LaCroy, would you like to go first?
My gosh. Well, I talked a little bit about, uh, I attended the Black Hills National Forest Board meeting. We did a tour of the Black Hills and it was, um, very informative, cause we did timber sales, what's going on there. We did weed sales, what, some fire mitigation places that, that are doing, uh, that are going on. In fact, if anybody wants to see it, the biggest obvious one is up, uh, in Deadwood, right above the lodge, the lot, back lodge at the parking lot. They're going up and over there. And, and they're actually working with game fishing parks and on habitat, humanity, for some other stuff on the backside. They're building a lake for the goats and, uh, or, I say goats, but.
The goats?
What are they? Sheep, there we go, sheep.
Big ones.
So they're doing that. So that was a pretty, pretty good tour. And also got to see some of the motorized trails, which I never got to see, or were interested in talking, talking to Holly. There's some amazing trail, trails in the back hills and in that area that they showed us too. And so that was very informative. It actually got me excited that, you know, as you live in this community this long and you don't get out there to see all this stuff, it's there, you know, and so, um, that was one thing I, I attended. Another deal was, uh, the, uh, Youth and Family Services, that's not on my list, but, uh, that, uh, Policy Committee, I attended that. Some of the things that I, I did work on in between our last meeting and this one, um, that I wanted to discuss with the Board was, I had a phone call from, uh, Jason Smith about speeding on, on South Valley Drive. And I, I, uh, CC'd several people on it, but he was concerned about the speeding on South Valley Drive. And within contacts, the chain of emails, we, we actually all worked together between the Sheriff's Department, the city police department, the city council, the street department. Everybody kind of worked together to work on a solution for dealing with that. Uh, we had some city patrolling on one side and sheriff patrolling on the other, signs being put up, uh, evaluations of the streets. I was really impressed with the cooperation of everybody working together on that, so I was really impressed on that. And out of that came conversations on what do we do with, with this? I had a long discussion with Mister Schmidt, and we talked about, uh, uh, the roads and annexation. Were under city rules, should we, you know, we had a good long conversation and sparked some interest in my mind and I reached out. And, uh, I'd like to have Dale Tuck and, and, uh, Mark and, and Joe get together and come up with a plan for South Valley Drive. Uh, not talk about, just them guys in that room, what's it gonna take to get? And this is, we gotta keep in mind, this is for the residents, cause that's what it's all about. It's not a city-county thing, it's, it's what, what's gonna be best for the residents. See if they can come up with the cost estimates to see what's, what's it gonna take. I'd like to see them come together with that common goal for the residents, not who's responsible for what, what needs to be done. And then bring it back to the city-county meetings for the mayor and, and leadership and say, this is what it is. The costs, we gotta figure out who's shares, whatnot, but this is the plan. I think that's what the residents want, you know, the, their, their concern is, they're caught in the middle both. They're, they're overseen by the three mile rule limit and our lots are different from this. And they want to do, I think they're open to things, but they wanting to see what can be done in the development in that area. It's just something I thought, and I, I wanted to bring it to the Commission's attention that I kind of threw that idea out there. So if you guys are against it, we cannot do it, or we can put it on the agenda, have a good discussion on it, or. But I, I think if they get together, come up with an idea and then bring it to the city-county meetings, and you guys can hash it out there, but I just thought the less politics in the room, the better, right? I, I think just, this is the goal. I was gonna type something up and bring it out and, but I just, I wanted to get it on your guys' radar. I'll type something out, but for what the goal is, there's gonna be no action taken. It's just a common goal, what to figure out.
I think that's a great idea, and I think that it needs to be done. Was there any discussion about speed bumps?
No. I personally don't like speed bumps.
Leaving that to the highway and the.
But I mean, that's, I think, if, that's something that I'm kind of working on, so if I hear a no, I won't move forward on anything. But, uh, um, another thing I was, I had another phone call, nine thirty in the morning, while I was in Chicago. And this was on Pennington County housing, questions on Pennington County housing. And, and I, I told the, the person, it was, uh, I'll have to look up his name. It's Kelly. His name's Kelly. I got it on my phone. But his was concerned where, what's our part with Pennington County housing, and I know it's, I don't know. But it coincides a lot of what we're working on, affordable housing. And I, I bring this up because I didn't have all the exact questions, answers, to be able to answer all of them. I'd like to see if we could get, uh, Pennington County Housing to give us a presentation to maybe show us what they do. And when I, when I meet, talk about that is what's their requirements for their services and what they provide? Cause that's one of the questions I think me and Deb have had, question of what is affordable housing? I think that would be good to be able to get some questions and understanding from them, so. Usually a lot of the questions I get on Pennington County, I was, how come the waiting list so long? You know, maybe just something I'd like to have them give us a presentation, so Mister Kelly can, it'll answer his questions, so it's factual, not from Lloyd LaCroy, you know, what I think it is. And, but that also sparked, sparked into my deal with, uh, I know Mister Roskinett continued his item, uh, to, two weeks from now, but when we talked about affordable housing, I wanted to bring up that we'd all had talks with, uh, Mister Lust. And I, I just wanted to explain, David Lust was hired by Black Hills Area Community Foundation to look into affordable housing. And we'd asked him to give a present, Gary and I, around September, if I believe right. And that has to do with affordable housing with tax abatement. I think it's a tool for toolbox. But I just wanted to bring, bring up that it, that ties into Black Hill, Pennington County housing also, because that was one of the things that he's been hired to work with too. So it, it all kind of comes together, because the housing's, affordable housing is, just as we talked about with, uh, mental health. It's gonna take multiple groups and organizations to work together to make something happen. It's going to take multiple groups and organizations to work together to make something happen. But I think between that, we need to find out what that poverty level number is, decide where we're at with that. And I think in the next couple of months, we're going to get some of that information. And I think we need to keep that fresh in our mind with some of the questions we want and be able to maybe forward it to Holly to have researched as far as the numbers. Because numbers changed what the state thinks and what, uh, the fedros think of what the, the poverty level is. I mean, it's, it's kind of crazy. But, uh, okay, now I'm done rambling. Just so we're all... As you guys know, some of you guys know, I went to Chicago for my anniversary, wife's birthday. I get it all done in one package, but, uh...
Congratulations to you.
But one of the things I notice when I go to these other places, I check the taxes of what we pay and so forth. You know what, their sales tax ever is ten and a half percent. And then they do, I was telling, uh, Mr. DeSanto about how they have a beverage tax. They have, I went to Target, they had to pay seven cents for a plastic bag because you have to pick how many bags you're going to take. And they charge you seven cents for a plastic bag. Now, do I, do not know all the details on this, but one of the advantages of, of using a Lyft driver and Uber driver, sometimes you get a very well-educated one. And when it's not, the, what first one we had gave me great details on Chicago's government, on how their budget's short and how they have tolls here and there and, and they're having big problems. And I, so sometimes it's very interesting, but, uh, and how their, their property taxes are so high. And he gave me estimates of costs. So I mean, sometimes it makes you, when you're done with the trip, I really appreciate where I come from. Uh, our tax, taxes in South Dakota are low. And I think we get a lot more done for what we're, what we're doing than we give ourselves credit for. And if you don't think so, check some of the other states. I'm done.
Commissioner DeSanto, thank you Lloyd.
In light of Lloyd's great presentation, I have nothing to say.
Mine's not going to be much longer. Uh, I did attend the Building Committee, which Gary and I are part of. Uh, three items that basically going on with the Building Committee is the current status of the jail renovation for the laundry and kitchen facilities. And I believe that's on schedule for the most part and in budget. And then the care campus, uh, should be ready, uh, ready, I think next month for the forty additional beds for the residential part, which is, uh, going to be a, a great addition, I believe, to Rapid City and the care campus itself. And then we got the La- LaCrosse Street property up there on LaCrosse that, uh, I'm assuming it's vacant right now. And we're trying to figure out some options for that. We considered just selling the property and trying to put a hundred and, or one, one and a half million dollars in our coffers. Uh, right now there's a, considering a trade for that property to another property located in downtown Rapid City that could eventually help the fire department expand. And we're just looking at all options right now. Uh, when we talk about affordable housing, I've got to be very careful not to mix up affordable housing with low income housing, which are two totally different animals. And I, uh, sometimes I'll say low income and, and low income and affordable are totally two different animals. But there is definitely a need for both. Uh, September the eleventh, I'm going to do the tour, uh, weed and pest tour, which that sounds like a pretty interesting, uh, day of getting out there with, uh, I think there's about thirty people going to do a tour of the, I'm not sure if it's going to be within the Black Hills or the Plains, but that ought to be a
It'll be both.
Very educational tour and looking forward to doing that. And speaking of tours, uh, Deb and Gary and I took one last week, mainly, uh, north of Wall. And we saw some, uh, some very serious road damage. And so we need to, uh, be thinking sooner or later, I, we're probably going to have to take a look at that wheel tax. I know that's a dirty word, word I, I call it building insurance, but, uh, we did see some bridges that needed replaced. So with that, I'll let Gary continue.
Thank you. Well, on the tour last week, we did see, uh, we saw a bridge that the, on Pedro Road that, uh, bridge deck was fine, looked great. Um, but once they got underneath it, the week before, they discovered that the pilings were basically all rotted out. Wasn't a lot of support there for the bridge deck. And, um, you know, I don't know how many others like that we're going to find, but, uh, that's one of the issues that we're certainly going to have to deal with in the future. And, um, I continue to work on putting together the information for a wheel tax. And, um, I will continue to pursue that with the intent of being, of bringing that before this commission, uh, sometime in twenty twenty. And, uh, since you guys all stole our thunder here. Uh, the other, the other road that we looked at was up there by the Cheyenne that had washed out.
We'll see.
And, uh, yeah. And, uh, that, that's really going to be a challenge to, to fix that for a permanent fix on it. They've got a temporary fix on it right now, but, uh, that water is just eroding that bank completely away. And, uh, it sounds like that Cheyenne is kind of ever-changing its course and you never know exactly where it's going to be next year or two years or five years down the road. So, uh, the permanent fix on that one is going to have to be, uh, considered long and hard as to how far back do you actually have to go from the Cheyenne in order to, to do a fix and hopefully do it one time without having to go back and revisit it four or five, ten years? So, um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, actually, the tour was amazing because we started at seven and we got done at four. We learned and we watched them chip seal. They're doing a two-mile road in, uh, Mark's area, chip seal. And I always thought it was one set of oil, but it's kind of more like a moving type oil. There's names for that. And then the, the aggregate on top and then they put a fogger over the top of that. And I always thought it just was one set of oil, so I learned something about chip sealing, um, about how they do the different types of roads and, and the bridges and just meeting the staff that do all this was pretty awesome. Um, they thought it was pretty cool that we're all out there and, you know, it shows that we, we cared about the, uh, employees and what they do and, and they were pretty, they were very appreciative of that. Joe and Mark are very informative on the tour and everything between roads, bridges. And I was asking and Joe knew and, um, the different types of corn and can you say all the different things that were growing out there? But it was very informative that way. Uh, number two is the Stallborn, uh, if you're interested, September twenty tenth, those bid openings will be opening. And then, um, if you read the NACO news, um, they're talking about Stepping Up Initiative reaches five hundred county participants. Um, this is on, uh, National Stepping Up Initiative to Reduce Mental Illness in Jails Reached a Milestone, five hundred county resolutions this month. Um, I think that, I don't know who would do it and how we get our article in there, but I think we also, um, I remember Commissioner LaCroy was talking about some stuff on the care campus with NACO that maybe we should put an article in here about what we're doing and a picture of our building and some other stuff. I think it would be very interesting, uh, for many people, um, to get that done. Um, Holly, I, I don't know who would actually do that article, meaning write all the stuff that we do and how we do it. But I think, um, other counties would be very appreciative of how we do our services here. And I think that's about it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I think, I think with that, Gary, we have a NACO, State NACO rep.
Yes.
And I, I can't name the person right off. Okay, Jim. I think we could probably...
Ask him maybe?
I think we, I think the first step is to have something written first and, or maybe need to check with them, see if there's a word limit, da, 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 type thing.
Bottom line, just see the information in order to put it in there. And if we can, put something in there and then move forward with Jim Smith, if he could submit it from him.
Because one of the things that I was hoping to do with the care campus, once the numbers come in, is I think at the beginning of the year, they ask for, uh, just like we did with, uh, uh, South Dakota Association, uh, be able to submit a project for recognition, recognition. I think that might be more of our route to go when that comes, to submit the care campus. And, and by then it's, we'll have the South Dakota one done. If we win that, then we've got another step to be able to, to present.
Basically to find out, Holly, the process and procedure of if you want to add an article to it. That's what we're looking for. And not maybe just this, but some other stuff on our jails and different things. Um, so I think that would be awesome.
That's a good idea.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy.
One other thing I wanted, I, I forgot to bring up is the Pawwall's coming October eleventh, so we're going to have the hand games coming. I'm, I'm bringing this up six weeks in advance, so...
Okay, city beaters a couple of times.
So far it's county won, city won, so it's...
We're going to have to have players that wouldn't include me. I'm just teasing you. Thank you, Commissioner. Say October eleventh, you said, sir?
Yeah, I believe it's October eleventh.
If you want to...
The start of it, I don't know the exact dates.
And if you want to see something completely beautiful, those, the outfits and everything and just the humbling of listening to the music and everything. Pretty amazing to be there and you just feel very, it feels very spiritual with the drums and stuff going. It's pretty cool. So, um, anyway, um, we'll move on to the approval of the vouchers.
So move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Items from public. Who's public? Haven't heard.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I'd make a motion that we take off the table of the budget.
Moved by Drews to take the budget off the table, twenty twenty budget. Second by DeSanto, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
He typed it out that fast. She outran me to her office. Pretty impressive.
She's getting her exercise today.
So it looked like, from what I've seen, a hundred and nineteen thousand short. Yeah.
Goal for reserves?
Yeah, yeah, short of our reserves. They have our reserves at fifty. So...
So, discussion? Cindy, you came up with the numbers?
I do, Holly's making me copies. I thought I had enough copies and I only had one and then a bunch of garbage behind it. Sorry about that.
She had several papers, but not...
Not the right. Not eight of the right one is what I was really hoping for.
We have to sing a song while we're waiting.
That's some unfair pressure there.
You don't want to hear me sing either. Sound like you get. Thank you, that's Holly.
My dear.
Holly.
Two, oh, I only changed it one percent, point zero one.
All right.
Okay, I can start out with questions, remember?
Commissioner LaCroy.
So Holly for clarif-, uh, Holly, uh, Cindy for clarification, we got total levy is a six point one eight, one one eight. And so that, for, for the average citizen, what is the cost per hundred thousand?
That was, um, on one of those other sheets that I gave you.
Okay.
Was, was the reduction of two dollars and forty cents per...
No, it'll be two dollars and forty cents?
But an increase over last year, but, but not the four eighty that we were anticipating.
And originally we were looking at it was going to be six. Am I correct?
Four eighty was the original increase that we had looked at.
Right, total of.
Six dollars and something, Lloyd, is the total.
Yeah.
Do you have that, Lloyd?
Yeah, I have.
I grabbed all my stuff from my other and didn't grab my, the rest of my budget worksheet.
Okay.
Six dollars and something, Commissioner LaCroy, for increase per hundred thousand.
I have it, just a second.
Mine says the original estimate was the increase would be four eighty per hundred thousand.
Plus the two something four.
Right.
I forgot.
The original, the four dollars and eighty cents per hundred thousand was the increase that we were at at provisional.
Right.
So this...
Commissioner Drews.
So this comes up to an increase of two dollars and forty cents per hundred thousand. Uh, levy of all county funds, six point one one eight. We're awful close there too.
Great, that's, I, that's what I was trying to get to. So the total is going to be the two dollars and forty cents per hundred thousand, which is, when we were going through the budget, is two forty less than we originally were talking when we were talking about the budget. So I think it's, with the numbers that came in, they actually came better. And with the goals that the, the commission set with what we wanted to get done, I, I think we were able to, you know, with the high demand of the courts and other stuff that we, we deemed it was priorities for some extra staff. I think that's a, a small increase for what we need to do. I think the shortfall of our fifteen percent goal that we were looking for, for our reserves, I think we can, uh, we can easily cover with what gets returned at the end of the year unspent. And if we had concerns over that, it, it's very, very easy. It's not unusual if we, for a commission to be halfway to a year and, and request that, uh, departments hold back on some spending to try and meet a goal or something. We could do that if we, I, I don't like that. But I mean, if, if an emergency had come up or something like, I'm not just saying willy-nilly, but if an emergency come up and something had happened, um, we could direct the reductions requests.
That would definitely be up to the board.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Overall, I'm, I'm most supportive of what, of it.
Commissioner Drews.
Hey, you know, we, we talked about a couple of months ago, you know, trying to get to, uh, about a fifteen percent reserve goal. Uh, this is coming very close to that at fourteen point eight two. Uh, and I agree with Lloyd, I don't think it's going to be an issue of getting up to that fifteen percent. I think our challenge in the meantime, uh, for next year is to try to figure out what that, what that reserve actually should be. Uh, kind of floating out there on thin air right now as to, as to a number that, that, that should actually be. So, um, I don't, I don't think, fifteen percent, obviously, I, in my mind, is not too high. Uh, if anything, it's maybe a little bit low yet, um, but we should come up with that, figure out what that number really should be. And, uh, and part of that, I think, has to come from Cindy's conversations with Moody, uh, relative to, you know, where we're at as far as bonding and so forth. So, uh, what's acceptable to them for, for having the highest rate of bonding instead of being dropped down, so. That's right, madam.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Um, when we're looking at the reserves, I made a suggestion that we don't take COLA this year. Everybody wants to take COLA because we figure we're going through the Compensation Committee and we want to get the idea of what's going on there. But if we did not take COLA, um, we would exceed our fifteen percent goal. Um, and so I'm still under the, of the opinion that instead of throwing caution to the wind, that that we take, we, we vote to not take COLA this year, which will put us at or above, above our fifteen percent reserve goal.
Cindy, can you tell me on that COLA? Sorry, Commissioner DeSanto, just one second. What was that? Do you have your other paper with the COLA?
I did not bring those with me, the reduction in COLA. I'm sure it's in here.
But there was a certain percentage that it take, took us from like fourteen, whatever, eight zero or wherever we're at. I didn't think it was a big, that big a percentage to pull this way over. I usually keep my other papers and stick them in my.
And I kind of walked out with minimal after I redid that in such a hurry. Sorry.
Do you have those numbers, Commissioner DeSanto, of what the change was?
We apologize for running you back.
I do not have those numbers with me. I believe it was nine hundred thousand in that area.
And the only issue with that is that some people aren't getting steps. They're using COLA that have been here, long-term employees. So for me, that's why I said I would rather have us look at what's gonna happen with compensation committee and COLA and steps for the future because that, that difference for our long-term employees that don't get any steps because they've been here a long time, they only get COLA, we would be not giving them anything for an increase this year.
But they've gotten their steps in the past. We've eliminated the, the compression problem that we had. We were, we went ahead and gave steps to those who were supposed to get their steps.
Yes, people that get steps, they max out on steps and all they get is COLA. So they won't be getting any more steps and they won't get a COLA this year either if we take that. That's my only concern with that is to find a better solution for COLA and steps and what happens with all the employees instead of just some of them that are gonna get increases from steps and some, if we took COLA, would get nothing.
Not to negate the impact it might have on those people, but how many of those exist?
Highway Department, there's a lot. Holly's shaking her head a lot, but I know in Highway Department, they were very concerned about that because they have a lot of long terms that.
That are at the top of their steps and.
Yeah, we have employees that are just off the scale period that have been here so long. Plus, elected officials won't get any increase either because they're only eligible for a COLA as well. So it's not just employees. You'd be affecting the elected officials too, plus all the career employees that are off the scale. Highway's probably the biggest hit because, I mean, those guys are there thirty, forty years.
They do have dedicated employees.
Commissioner DeSanto, did you wanna?
You still.
Did we get those numbers, that percentage, Holly? Okay, Ms. Cindy?
If we reduced the general fund budget by the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, we'd bring reserves to sixteen point four seven percent.
Madam Chair, Liz, Mark's got more.
Commissioner DeSanto, you have the.
You know, during the budget process, that's why I directed this to the compensation committee meeting. See, that, that playing part in that, there's a lot more to all of this than we, I, I, we quite understand when, when we have years of service and, and then trying to understand why we give step increases is, is for the long-term employees who don't get nothing. And it's, I mean, there's just a wide variety of it. That's why I suggest compensation committee for, for 2021, I think, need to have some serious talks and then bring us back a, a recommendation because I think once we get done with, with this wage study, then we'll, we'll have a good point, idea of where we're at. Because five years ago, when it was done, we were a little under and then we didn't implement it for like two years. And so what, what good did that do us when we held off for so long? We want to be fair and we want to be competitive. And I think we also need to take a good look at what we have in our community as leaders, to how wages are adjusted. A lot of companies do a costly living. Some give just a flat amount, whether it's so much per hour every year, that's what they do. With that, they can budget with it, but with.
The bottom line is not to discount what you're saying, Commissioner DeSanto, but hopefully build on, not waiting for 2021, but 2019. I think we've learned a lot this year, having a different auditor and how we're working things and how we can change some stuff in, in a lot of things that we're doing, that we could do differently. And I'd hope before the 2020 budget that we're prepared and we're ready for some of this, the steps, the COLA, some of the stuff we're doing with our insurances. Gary is helping with some of that and some changes that we can make there. Maybe the wheel tax would be a change. I mean, there's a lot of things coming that we have learned from Cindy that we hadn't learned from the other auditor, even though she's, she was wonderful. We love her, that kind of thing. But we're trying to make this even better than it's been before just by looking at some changes in our compensation. So, and in our insurances. And I think if you look, that's pretty much most of our budget in those areas, if I'm correct. So those are huge changes. So again, we're not, I, I believe we're not discounting anything you're saying with that, but I also know that the staff came back with what, about nine hundred thousand dollars worth of changes. We also know that in Pennington County, the meth epidemic has hit us huge and it's made a huge difference on our budgets, our justice, where our public defenders, our state's attorneys, our court costs that hit us hard, our flooding this year with the roads and bridges. It's, it's probably, it's the most water we've had since the sixties, guys. So we have roads, complete roads dropping off of the radar. We have bridges that there's, you can't hold off. We've had many of our bridges in Pennington County that are forty years older, Mark. Well, they got hit those bridges this year through that flooding that we've never had that's been huge. This budget, I believe, based on all of the factors that have come forward and all the changes that the staff and people have made to make this budget work, I think this, this commission did a wonderful job. I think the staff did a wonderful job. Cindy, we couldn't have done it without you.
Madam Chair.
I, I think we did, we did well, folks, from what I'm seeing for the numbers. And then again, everybody that has contributed this, this with their information, Lloyd, Commissioner DeSanto, Ron Ross Connect and Gary Drews, you've done a great job of asking the questions that needed to be asked in order to make these changes. But next year, we can do better on some of these things that we're looking at. This commission will still be here next year and we can show that, you know, we are listening and that hopefully we don't have the, the flooding and, and some of the things we've learned through the courts , how to cut costs on some of the addictions that we have and to try to help people through different diversion programs and stuff. So bottom line is, I think people did a great job this year.
Madam Chair. Just, just to follow up on the compensation committee. You know, the reason why that was formed was because they need to have good, honest conversations and it takes a while to get them done. And that's why that was formed is, from my understanding, is to have those conversations of wide variety of people. One of the things I fought for on the, the compensation committee was to have an extra person on there who was not in the upper management level because they have such history to be able to bring back to that table and explain to them. But I think there are some good conversations that need to be had. And one of the good things that came out of that this year, or for last year, is preparation for the budgets was to give the department heads direction at the very beginning of the whole process to include the COLA, the steps and so forth and present it to us and so we can work with it from there. Because we used to get so bogged down with, with all the, those discussions. I, I think, Mark, you had an act, I had my doubts when you gave the direction to have the department heads go back in the room and have, and see what they did, but they did a good job. I was, I was really surprised because some of the past feedback that I've gotten is it created hardships, but it worked really well this year. And I think that was a good idea and I think it worked well. And I appreciated that input. But I think, as Gary said, next year, we need, I think the reason why we were jumping up, if I, I'm just coming back to me, it seems like the past, we were asked to do a seven, we wanted to get to a seventeen percent reserve or some. I don't know why that sticks in my head, but.
Holly says at one point it was nineteen.
Okay, that's, that's what I kind of remembered in some of the past discussions. And quite frankly, from working on the budget to get to that point, yeah, you're not giving raises, you're not doing, we're gonna have to get creative. And I think we got departments that are working hard to, to keep them in budget so if we can hold the same, I think. And I think the board was on, in agreement to have them, compensation committee step up and do a little more work this year than, than what they're probably used to.
So at this point, Cindy, could you read the motion if we wanted to move this forward?
I'll not only read it, I'll make it.
Go ahead, Drews.
Make a motion to approve the 2020 annual budget in the amount of a hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and eight hundred and twenty-one cents.
Million?
A million, I'm sorry. Hundred and three million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. Five percent uncollectible taxes at three million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Miscellaneous revenue at forty-nine million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Cash applied at twelve million, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and eight hundred and eight cents, eight hundred and eight dollars. And taxes in the amount of forty-five million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
There a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect. One thing I would like to put in there is what the effect is on that per hundred thousand in that motion. Do we have that exact amount?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
Levis are not approved by the state.
Okay.
And they won't be until December. So I really hate to put that within your motion because I can't stick to that. It's all gonna be based on the final numbers from this.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. And then.
Estimating is two.
Yes.
So we do have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
One no from Commissioner DeSanto. Motion carries.
I do have the resolution that the board.
Okay.
So we have to sign it?
Commissioner DeSanto, we need to pull your item off the table.
Yes. Do I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to remove my special meeting, special budget meeting from the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
If I voted no, I don't sign this. Is that, no? If I voted no.
Okay, so at this point, we don't need another meeting. So.
Jay, what's that?
We don't need another meeting for our budget, right, Holly? We were, that was our final?
Right.
Sorry, I think the motion, the proper motion is to take it off of the table because you've got it laying there right now.
We did.
So you need to take it off.
He did, he did move it.
No, he made a motion to remove it from the agenda. That's different.
No, he said to bring it off the table.
He made a motion to move it off the table.
I said agenda, table. I make a motion to remove my request for a special budget meeting off of the table.
Okay. And the second by Drews, right?
On that. And then you can.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Now, Ms. Holly, what?
We'll just take no action on, on his request for a special meeting because the budget's approved.
Okay. So next would be executive session, a motion for personal matters and.
So moved.
Motion made by Drews. Is there a second to go into executive session?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Out of executive session.
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Drews?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.